Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Monday, December 6, 2021 City Council meeting. Welcome, everybody. Due to the Governor's proclamation 20-28 relating to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings, this meeting is being held remotely. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members in attendance. So please say "here" when I call your name. Councilmember DeMichelle.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Thank you. Council President Hunt.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Marts.
Here.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray has an excused absence this evening. Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
That's great. Thank you. Six in attendance tonight. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I would like you to join me, but can you please keep your microphone muted? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on our meeting tonight, which is the last council meeting of the year, we think, is a special business item. We're going to do some recognition of our local electeds and councilmembers and staff and city attorney. And so I'd like to start off first tonight to MC, Councilmember Lambert, who is in the hall. Please come and join me. Welcome, Councilmember Lambert.
Good to be here with you.
Councilmember Lambert is the current Third District representative, and Issaquah is in the King County Third District, and I want to thank her tonight. Kathy has served as the King County Councilmember for District 3 for 20 years. She has been instrumental in facilitating many projects in Issaquah. In particular, Councilmember Lambert has been a huge supporter of the Issaquah Senior Center. Recently, she helped the city obtain a second van for the senior center through the KC Metro Surplus Program. She also helped provide grant funding that replaced aging kitchen equipment that is essential to the success of the meals program at the senior center. Councilmember Lambert also helped procure and distribute masks for essential workers, vulnerable populations, and the business community in Issaquah during the height of the pandemic. We are also very grateful for her assistance in securing a $10 million grant for the proposed City of Issaquah Transit-Oriented Development Project, New State Route 900 and Newport Way. This mixed-use housing project could provide 50% of the units to residents who make less than 80% of the average median income of King County residents. Councilmember Lambert, thank you for your work in the Third District and for your many years of service to our region, and would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for that introduction. It has been a true honor to represent all the people of this district. And during the 20 years before the new redistricting in 2010, you weren't in my district, and so it was a pleasure to get to know my new members during that time. So I thank you so much. I think you've had a very successful year during a time that was very unusual in history, and I'd like to say that I think that your leadership, your mayor and your council and your city employees have done an incredible job of navigating. And during the pandemic, when we had regular meetings about vaccinations, your entire staff did an amazing job, and it was just a pleasure to see how well they coordinated and all the things that they did together. The mayor went through many of the partnerships that we have done with the county and the city. I am very pleased that you're going to be an urban center, and I hope that the transit that you need for that will be forthcoming so that it makes it an easy transition for you. You are a wonderful city and very glad that you are in my district. I want to wish good wishes to Councilmember Goodman, and she goes on, and thank all the members of working so closely and serving your constituents so very well. In the last comments I would like to make are that there's some really important decisions ahead in the next year, and so I hope that the City of Issaquah will be a leader in some of those decisions. And as we look at the staffing ratio of the Sheriff's Department in this area, you have your own police department, but the sheriff backs you up. And so I think it's going to be really important for your deputies to know that there's a strong backup in the county, and so looking at that ratio is going to be very important. And lastly, the executive has now said that he will open up a biosolid study, and I think that's going to be very important, and I hope Tola, your expertise in science, will be there to look at the suppositions, and I hope that all these very important, but some call nerdy, topics will be led in great part by the wonderful leadership of Issaquah. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Lambert, and thank you for your service, and please stay and join us for the rest of the special presentation.
I'd like to. Thank you so much.
The next special celebration.
Mayor. Sorry, this is Tisha. I'm not sure if you're able to see the chat, so I wanted to share with you that Councilmember Marts has interest in making comments.
That would be great. Thank you. I can now, but I did miss that. Thank you very much, City Clerk. Councilmember Marts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Marts. I just really want to thank outgoing County Councilmember Lambert for the many great years that she and I spent together working on important issues on GMPC and then on GMPP. And I want to thank her particularly for her leadership on waste management technology. I'm confident that in 20 or 30 years, I'll be standing at a groundbreaking ceremony for a King County incinerator, and I hope to see County Councilmember Lambert there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Once the executive said in a joke that he would name it after me, the Lambert Dump, and I said, "Well, I'd rather be called the Energy Center because I have lots of energy, but the subtitle will be the most important." And he said, "What subtitle?" I said, "The one that says, 'When you're hot, you're hot.'"
Thank you, Councilmember Lambert. Thank you, Councilmember Marts. I can now see the chat as well. I've got my notes moved over to the side. The next special presentation I would like to do tonight is for outgoing Councilmember Goodman. And I wish I could do this and see her face at the same time as I'm cracking, so I'm moving my notes again. Councilmember Goodman's involvement in our city began in 1996 as an award-winning reporter of the Issaquah Press. She has practiced law at the Issaquah firm of Carson Knoll, P L L C, since 2007. Councilmember Goodman was appointed to the City Council in 2011. She had two very tough challengers that day. Future Councilmembers Paul Winterstein and future Councilmember Mary Lou Polly were also vying for that very same seat. Maybe it was her experience in journalism, or in her law practice, or the fact that she drew number one and got to go first, but it was pretty clear after she spoke that day who was going to be appointed to that seat. I have had the great pleasure of working with Councilmember Goodman for the last eight years, and I have learned invaluable lessons about good policymaking. Do your homework. Come ready to share and explore. Don't make up your mind until all the questions have been asked and answered and everybody has been heard. Always invite the stranger to the table, meaning whoever may be impacted or affected by this decision. Make sure that all voices are in the conversation. Make sure you explain your decision-making on camera to the people who have elected you to serve this community. And meet the people where the people are, and that is not typically at our council meetings. I am grateful for serving in council leadership with Stacy for two years and in her commitment to responding to all resident and community comments that were sent to the council email address to let them know, "We hear you, and we will do what we can do to help." I am grateful that Councilmember Goodman had the resolve to propose the very difficult decision to place a short-term moratorium on central Issaquah development until emerging issues were addressed and all of the hard work that followed in the next year and a half to clarify community expectations and outcomes. I appreciated her responsiveness to resident concerns about excessive truck traffic on East Sunset Way and her willingness to propose revisiting the truck route designations. Also, her proposal to restrict revenues that we receive as a city for school traffic speed camera violations and allocate those strictly for safety improvements versus just placing them in the general fund. She is a creative and a responsive problem solver. It has been an incredible learning opportunity for me to work with Councilmember Goodman, and I appreciate all the effort, thoughtfulness, and care for the community that goes into great policymaking. For that experience, I am eternally grateful. Stacy, I'd like to present you with a couple of things, obviously virtually, but first off, I feel like I'm doing a little bit of a Vanna White, but we have a plaque for you thanking you for your years of service, 2011 to 2021. And in addition, we started a few years ago where we take some of the beautiful, beautiful Salmon Days art that we've received over the years. They've always sent two copies, not really sure why, and this will be able to go home with you and hopefully remind you of all the wonderful benefit and the amazing amount of work that you did to make this community an amazing place. I just want to thank you so much for your service. Thank you, Stacy. And I'm just, again, moving my script around to make sure I am not missing anything. Okay. Oh, Councilmember Goodman, did I miss you wanting to make a comment earlier? I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay. I just wanted to thank Kathy Lambert for the things we've worked on together, and one of the things that we've worked on together is the King County's Adoption Day every fall, and she and I were there, have been there together at the courthouse on that very, very special occasion. And her leadership and her compassion are just unmatched in that arena. I just wanted to thank her for all that she's done in that area, too.
Kathy and I are still here together, so thank you for sharing that. That's fantastic. Oh, Councilmember Marts would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Councilmember Goodman knows that I like numbers more than just about anything. She's been on council 3,927 days. That would be 10 years, 8 months, and 29 days. And I realized when I, coming up with that number, I've actually worked with Stacy longer than I've worked with anyone else ever in my career. I worked eight and a half years at Blue Origin and seven and a half years at IV. So 39, 27 days, 39, 27 issues probably, 39, 27 opportunities for collaboration. I didn't always avail myself of that collaboration, which is unfortunate, because Councilmember Goodman was always prepared, always had a well-considered and well-thought-out position, and those positions always considered community concerns and aspirations. We didn't always agree, but I always wanted to know what Councilmember Goodman thought before taking a vote, and I want to thank her for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Marts.
Well, finally, whoops, sorry.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Goodman was appointed on March 7, 2011, to replace Councilmember and former council president Maureen McCary. I was lucky enough to be good friends with Maureen, and I knew how excited she was about Councilmember Goodman's appointment. Former Councilmember McCary passed away in 2013, but I'm confident she would be pleased and proud of the decades of leadership that Councilmember Goodman has provided to the city and to this body. Thank you.
That's lovely. Thank you, Councilmember Marts. Councilmember DeMichelle.
Thank you. I, too, would like to praise Councilmember Goodman. We've known each other for a long time, probably, I'm guessing, around 25 years. I was on the school board, and Stacy was a reporter, and all of the wonderful items that Councilmember Marts mentioned were very evident when she was a reporter for the Issaquah Press, the fairness and the accuracy and the preparedness that we knew then. And then, over the years, I've known her because she's been very active in so many, so many activities that support our community. But Stacy, what I'm going to take forward, I'm sorry, Councilmember Goodman, what I'm going to take forward is, you're wonderful, I hear it in my head all the time now, what problem are we trying to solve? And I promise that I will take that forward in the work that we continue to do. I think that's, it's going to be one of your many, many legacies to this group, and just best wishes on your journey forward.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. Councilmember Goodman, you are a treasure. So thank you all. That was very nice. Councilmember Goodman, would you like to address us now that I thoroughly embarrassed you when I told you I wouldn't do that?
No, probably not, because I'll just start crying. You know, people ask me, "Are you excited? Are you excited to have all this time?" No, I'm not excited. This has been just the most incredible experience. And I just want to thank the community. So, thanks the community for letting me serve them.
On behalf of the community. Thank you. Ooh, hope we got all the tears out with that one. Wow, that was tough. Okay, next up, I'd also like to do some special recognition for one of our employees who has also served as a council member, who has also volunteered on boards and commissions, and who is probably the only other person in the city that can challenge me for almost 30 years of service to the city. So John Trager. John has been our IT manager, and he is retiring at the end of the year. He has served our community in so many capacities, including city council member from 2008 to 2011. He was the vice chair of the Economic Vitality Commission from 2012 to 2015, and most recently as Issaquah's IT manager since 2015. John has implemented and supported new technologies to help the city become more efficient and high-performing as an organization. John has built and mentored an excellent IT team committed to customer service, security, and serving Issaquah. John, I have a couple of gifts for you as well. First off, again, another service plaque, and this is pretty good in recognition of nearly 30 years of dedicated service in the City of Issaquah. Very few of these get into the paper, I am sure. So thank you for all your service in all varying capacities. And because we started this tradition before you left as council member, we've also picked a selection of Salmon Days art that we hope that you and Annette enjoy in your house as well. And John, congratulations. It's retirement. This is fantastic. We thank you for all your service in so many ways. And would you like to say anything to the council and the audience?
Sure. Well, I think everybody here on the council is relatively familiar with me. I do remember when Stacy first showed up in '96 and was covering the Development Commission, and then tried to convince her that she could definitely do council, and then sure enough, she was one of the best. So it was pretty awesome. Yeah, and it's been a real honor to serve the city in the last six years. You know, the great efforts of both the IT team and the city staff from all departments really managed to transform the city from what was a really paper-bound, green screen, non-secure, 1990s state of technology that I found when I got here in 2015 to modern, efficient, and secure technology platform that puts the city in a position for a really good future. You know, as a technology leader in a city, you inevitably end up playing a role in just about every department and every function. And during that, I met all kinds of great staff in the city and have seen, you know, new staff learn and grow and become leaders themselves just in their six years. And I'm continually impressed by the amount of dedication and service that comes from everybody that works in the city. So we've come a long ways in the last six years. There's been a lot of change, not just technology, and I'm grateful for any small part that I had in helping making that happen. And so I think that the future of the city looks really good, and I'm excited about it. And I'm not going anywhere. I am retiring from trying to make a buck and just going to enjoy having fun and staying in Issaquah. It's a great place to live.
That's fantastic. Thank you, John. City Administrator Bob Quitz, I'd like to add a comment.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, John's very modest. I've been in local government, working in various communities in various states through the better part of 30 years, and I have never met a more tenacious IT manager. John does not accept no for an answer, and he doesn't normally have to because he's usually right. And that's only with my two years being here. You know, he set us up for the horrors of a pandemic, and we hardly broke a sweat where it took months and months of our neighbor communities, some of them very, very large, to sort out how to operate. You know, John and his team, you know, they had it all figured out very quickly, either with technology we were using and could use better, with things that were on a shelf ready to go, with laptops for nearly all employees before the pandemic started. You know, John, we owe you a tremendous debt of gratitude for all of your years of service, but especially these last two, that you and your team really allowed us to continue to serve the residents of Issaquah in some really truly unheard-of, unexpected situations. The tech that we had ready to go really made a difference. So again, on behalf of all of us who've had the opportunity to work with you over the years, thank you very much and best wishes.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Quitz. John, I just want to do one more thank you. Personally, friend to friend, John and I met very, very early on in the 90s, just after my family had moved here and was really interested in learning about the outdoors. And our families have been skiing together for almost three decades. So boys going off with fathers to different ski vacations, John probably going with me on the first day I tried backcountry skiing. Yeah, it was hard. So just really glad that you and Annette are staying in town. Thank you for the wonderful work you did here. Thank you for your volunteerism in the community, and just really wishing you the best for your retirement.
Yeah, thank you. You know, public service just happens. You know, you get asked, and you just answer. And it started that way with the Development Commission. I called up to complain about something, and they asked me if I could read a blueprint. Next thing you know, I'm on the Development Commission. And then later, I get cornered by some council members who say, "I think you should run for council." And then later, after I'd left the council, I was an IT consultant, and I got approached by a city administrator who said, "Help. We need help. We need to change how we use technology." And so I decided to take the plunge back into government. So it's been interesting and fun, and never a dull moment, for sure.
No, there hasn't. Thank you, and thank you for helping us for the last two years. It's been really hard, and your team has just been outstanding. Thank you, John. I have one more special presentation this evening. I'm going to do a Jim Haney could turn on his camera for us. Hi, Jim. Ogden Murphy-Wallace has provided legal services to the city since 1983, and prior to Jim Haney's service as city attorney, he served in many roles. He began his service to the City of Issaquah as a prosecuting attorney. For many years, he worked on land use issues for the city. He is well-practiced on all facets of municipal representation and has represented Washington cities and special purpose districts for more than 50 years. Jim, I'm not sure about that number. I don't think.
Forty.
Okay, there you go. Typo. We gave you 10 more years. It didn't seem right. Jim has served as Issaquah City Attorney since 2016 and will continue to work on select projects into 2022, as noted by AB 8298, which is on tonight's consent agenda. Jim, we also have a plaque for you. I do not have it with me tonight, but we'll make sure to get it to you. And I just wanted to thank you for your dedication to the City of Issaquah over such a long, long, long period of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I could, I'd just like to say that I want to say thanks to all members of the council and to you for your support over the last six years or so that I've been, five or six years that I've been the city attorney and succeeding Wayne Tanaka in that role. I'd also like to thank you on behalf of the firm for the 38 years that you've contracted with us for your city attorney services. And as the mayor said, I started with the City of Issaquah, or I started with Ogden Murphy-Wallace on March 1, 1983, and one of my first assignments was to be the city prosecutor. So I've had a long history with the city and have enjoyed every minute of it. It's been my honor and privilege to serve as your city attorney. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with all of you and with your excellent staff, and I look forward to the changing role that we'll have and to continuing to work with you on some issues. So I wish you all the best as you move into 2022 and beyond. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. If you had 50 years of service, you'd just have started with us when you were a baby, so that number really didn't look quite right to me.
It seems like 50, Mayor, sometimes, but...
Okay, that makes sense. City Administrator Bob Quitz.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to add, on behalf of the staff, the City of Issaquah, our thanks to Jim and Ogden Murphy-Wallace for their representation. You know, the role of a contract city attorney is sometimes neither efficient nor foul. They're not a city employee, but certainly have the responsibilities to protect and, you know, keep us in good stead. And Jim, again, on behalf of all of us here who you've worked with at the city over your six years as city attorney, I want to thank you for your representation and wish you all the best in the future.
Very nice. Thank you, City Administrator Bob Quitz. I'd like to ask the council's permission for a two-minute recess so I can reposition myself into a different office again. Okay, it is 7:41, and we'll be back on screen, let's say, at 7:45. Thank you very much, Travis. Welcome back. It is 7:46. We're returning from our break and our Christmas photo opportunity. I really enjoyed that last part of the meeting, getting to provide recognition to those that have served so long in so many different capacities to the benefit of our community. We're moving on now into audience comments. And for those of you who submitted the online form to make comments, your name will be called shortly. For those who have joined us tonight and would like to make comments but did not sign up in advance, please raise your virtual hand. And if you're on the phone, you can press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. This can vary by device. And one option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? For general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. For those making comments, I have a few guidelines. Please make sure to direct your comments at the whole city council and not individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone, state your name and address and relationship to the city, speak clearly and pause frequently. Please limit your comments to five minutes and remute your microphone when done. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously. We thank you for taking the time to address us this evening. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
Yes, Larry Franks. Larry, in just a minute here, I'll make you a panelist. You should then have the option to unmute and can also turn your video on if you'd like.
I'll stick to the, just the verbal part. My name is Larry Franks. I've been a resident of the city of Isiqua for forty-nine years at 24001 Southeast 103rd Street. My message is brief. Thank you. Thank you for passing the Climate Action Plan in front of you. The city of Isiqua is leading the way. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you very much, Larry. The next person to make comments, City Clerk?
Yes, next we have Mega Mishra. Mega, in just a moment, I'll move you up as a panelist. You then should see the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on.
Good evening. My name is Mega Mishra, and I'm a resident of Samamish. I also am a student at Gibson Act here in Isiqua, as well as a member of Sustainability Ambassadors, a professional development program for student leaders, teacher leaders, and community leaders committed to rapidly advancing a sustainable future. At Sustainability Ambassadors, we design and implement projects at the individual, community, and city level. All of these projects align with the goals and actions of King County City's climate collaboration. We plan to create a more specific alignment table for the city of Isiqua once the Climate Action Plan is passed. This is what I came to speak with you about, the imperative for this council to adopt the strongest possible climate action plan for our city. In our current world, it is becoming increasingly urgent to take climate action. If we do nothing, our future generations will be left with a world that is unlivable. We must take accountability for our past actions and ownership of our future actions. Isiqua's Climate Action Plan sets the guidelines for establishing a better world, starting with one city. Our Climate Action Plan will not only provide for future generations, but set an example for surrounding cities. We at Sustainability Ambassadors are incredibly passionate about taking steps, large and small, to reach regional sustainability goals. By approving Isiqua's Climate Action Plan, we can turn around the damage that has been caused by our past short-sighted decisions. We appreciate your time, dedication to your city, and willingness to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mega. City Clerk, next person signed up to speak?
Next, we have Paul Winterstein. Paul, in just a moment here, you'll be moved up as a panelist. You'll have the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Hello, Mayor Paulie, members of the council. My name is Paul Winterstein. I live on Mount Logan Drive on Squawk Mountain here in Isiqua. I came here tonight to express my gratitude to Councilmember Lambert for her hard work and leadership and twenty years of determined service to her constituents and the people of King County as a whole. I thank you, Councilmember Lambert. May you enjoy life and the love of family as never before. I also want to thank the good public servants, Jim Haney and John Traeger. You are both professionals, and it was clear to me when I was on council that you always gave your best. You both made a positive impact on those that you assisted. Finally, I want to give a plus-one to Mayor Paulie's and Councilmembers Martz's and De Michelle's earlier comments about Councilmember Goodman, but I want to express my own deepest gratitude to Councilmember Goodman. You know, one of the best things that ever happened to me was to lose the appointment to the open council seat to her in 2011. That gave me the opportunity to sit in the audience during council committee meetings and watch, and frankly marvel, at her hard work, determination, and tenacity as she led the council through the establishment of the Rally Development Agreement, a piece of legislation that became the foundation for the later Central Isiqua Plan. And then, as already mentioned, then years later, and from a seat on the council, I watched and admired as Councilmember Goodman, in response to the Central Isiqua Plan that wasn't living up to expectations, she took the initiative, rallied the whole council, and led us through a moratorium that, in the end, vastly improved the plan's outcomes for the greater long-term benefit of our city. That was the sausage-making of good governance. It's not always pretty, but it has to get done, even though years later, almost no one will remember or know that it took someone with courage and grit to do the right thing. As noted earlier, those are just a fraction of the notable achievements and councilmembers' time in service to the people of Isiqua. I will wrap up with a few other thoughts about her impact. Stacy takes the fight to the injustice wherever she sees it, never giving ground, always standing for what is right. She opens eyes and minds and is a role model and inspiration. Some people just assume that opportunity is their privilege, theirs for the taking. Councilmember can see that mirage in the minds of others and sets out to smash it to pieces, and in doing so, knocks the shingles from our eyes, inspires, and becomes a role model that we need. This doesn't have to do with infrastructure, transportation, planning, parks, public safety, or budgets, or moratoriums. It's about service to others, about service that transcends. It's about service that transforms. And that's how I will remember Councilmember Goodman's service to me personally and to the people of Isiqua. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. That was lovely. City Clerk, who's next signed up to speak tonight?
Next, we have Ann Newcomb. Ann, in just a moment here, you'll be moved up as a panelist. You can unmute and may choose to turn your video on.
Hello.
Hi, Ann.
Good to see you, everyone. My name is Ann Newcomb. I, sorry, I'm getting rid of some stuff on my screen. I live at 16650 246 Place Southeast Isiqua, Washington. So on the south end of town. So as you vote tonight on the Isiqua Climate Action Plan, please remember that the climate crisis is urgent, and we need to take meaningful action now. Some voices are calling for delay and additional research, but those voices are part of an old narrative which has played a big part in getting us into this sad mess. As our climate heats up due to increased greenhouse gas emissions, we are seeing the following disasters unfold. More droughts, extreme forest, grass, and bush fires leading to death, dislip placement, and respiratory disease, as well as the accumulation of black soot on glaciers creating faster melt. And of course, carbon is released in the atmosphere as trees and vegetation burn. Other disasters, more disastrous floods and landslides, extreme heat leading to heat-related deaths, reduced snowpack leading to less water in streams and aquifers, crop failures, sea level rise leading to displaced communities. Earth's history tells us the safe level of atmospheric CO2 is 350 parts per million. But we passed that safe mark years ago and are currently at 420 parts per million. Earth has not had CO2 levels this high in millions of years. Isiqua has been talking about reducing greenhouse gas emissions for years, and now we need strong and swift action to make it happen. Isiqua has put a lot of thoughtful and expert time into the ICAP, and the thoroughness is reflected. To meet our important K4C goals of reduced sources of greenhouse gas emissions compared to 2007 baseline by 25% by 2020, 50% by 2030, and 80% by 2050, we will need meaningful action. As you know, we did not reach the first goal of 2025 reduction, or 25% reduction by 2020. So reaching our second goal in 2030 is even more of a challenge. But we can do it, and the ICAP is an excellent guide to the following, to follow to get us there. And by the way, I'm so proud of you all. You're amazing leaders, and I know you will vote to pass the Isiqua Climate Action Plan tonight. And I'm just really proud to live in Isiqua because you're all such amazing leaders and people, and so really have grasped all of this environmental stuff. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ann. City Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up to speak this evening?
We do. Kristi Gerrard. Kristi, I will make you a panelist now.
Good evening. My name's Kristi Gerrard. I am the executive director for Isiqua Highlands Council and a proud resident of the Isiqua Highlands Urban Village, and just wanted to take a brief moment on behalf of the Isiqua Highlands community to thank Stacy Goodman and Kathy Lambert for your many years of service and leadership. Stacy, as an Isiqua Highlands neighbor, we look so forward to working with you in the new year and in the years to come. And Kathy, we are grateful for your support of Isiqua Highlands over the years and wish you the best in this next life chapter. Thank you.
Kristi, thank you for the time for coming tonight. City Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up for comments?
We do. We have two more people signed up for comments, and if there's anyone else on the call who'd like to make comments, please send me the host a chat message or raise your virtual hand by finding the small hand icon in the participant panel. The next person who signed up to speak is Ann Fletcher. Ann, I will make you a panelist now.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Ann Fletcher. I'm a longtime resident of Isiqua and a People for Climate Action leader. I already sent you a petition of sixty area residents who urge you to approve this Climate Action Plan. And a number of residents are also attending the meeting in support of this plan. I want to reiterate my thanks to all the members of the community and the boards and the commissions, the mayor, administration, and staff. They have worked jointly to create a high-quality plan. And this plan is a living document. I love that about it. Its implementation guide will allow it to be further developed as we learn more and try things out, a real scientific approach. And then we will truly be able to meet and achieve these crucial goals. I do want to point out one potential gap, and I haven't succeeded in getting it across yet. I'd like you to consider it. The transition to clean renewable energy in existing buildings is not listed as a measurable target. It seems we would want to measure how we are doing on existing buildings, which are a large contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, and to ensure we reach that overarching goal that Ann Newcomb mentioned. The building and energy goal and the strategies and actions include existing buildings. But a target and metric are missing. I believe this should be added and repeated, if needed, in the comp plan. If you can't do that, then just measure it anyway. It's really important, and I don't think we should wait until 2024 to reconsider. I think that's too late. But whatever you decide tonight on that, don't delay approving the plan. As we meet tonight, Shoreline City Council is voting on their building electrification ordinance for commercial and large multifamily homes. We are so excited for them, and we hope for positive outcomes, as so many cities are starting to plan and work towards these goals. And we hope the same for Isiqua's Climate Action Plan. So it's now up to you to show leadership on this crucial issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. City Clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak this evening or having indicated that they would like to speak?
Yes, the last person who's indicated a desire to speak is Dave Kapler. Dave, I will make you a panelist now. You have the floor, Dave.
Okay, hopefully I'm now properly hooked up here. I'd like to thank Stacy for her service, not just on the, on the city council, but her work as a reporter and then as an editor at the Isiqua Press was really important. And the ability to get attention to very important topics in front of the city was something she was really accurately and thoroughly accomplished, and I much appreciate that from pre-council service. I do also, with Kathy Lambert, do hope that finally we're going to get a serious look at waste energy out at the huge landfill we have south of town. In terms of climate, two words, salmon and wildfire. Talk about salmon, we talk about floods, we talk about droughts, we talk about water quality, huge issues to Isiqua. Bellevue likes to advertise that they're a city in a park. We are a city in a park slash forest, in some cases more forest than anything. And I really think it's an issue that wildfire is something that is really needs to be strongly addressed. This last summer, the family, we did a lot of walking up on Squawk, and a lot of those houses used to have views. Now they got huge, big trees. And a lot of those houses used to have views. Now they got huge big trees, and there's a lot of them up there. And I just hope that the city is really working with our fire people and everybody else, code enforcement and the rest, to deal with the threat we face with fire. Thank you for your hard work on climate action. Thank you.
Thank you, David. City Clerk, is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
I don't see that there is.
That's great. Thank you. Well, I'd like to thank everybody who chose to speak to council tonight. We had many speakers speak about the votes that's on for tonight, which is the Issaquah Climate Action Plan, a plan that had fantastic outreach during COVID, and we were still able to come up with a fabulous document. Many of our other speakers also echo some of the earlier appreciation for Councilmember Lambert and Councilmember Goodman as they leave public service. So again, that was fantastic to hear from people tonight. I'm going to remind everybody that if you do want to submit comments to your council, you can always write them at any time at citycouncil@issaquawa.gov. And Council President Hunt, I'd like to pass it over to you to see if there were any email comments to summarize on tonight's agenda topics.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have received several comments on tonight's agenda items. And while we've been doing virtual meetings, I have been summarizing emailed comments that we received that are specific to comments on the agenda this evening. So for AB 8256, which is the Climate Action Plan, we received multiple emails in support. Those individuals also spoke to us today at Public Comments earlier. And one of them, one of those emails also had an attachment with this petition that was mentioned in Public Comments with the 60 signees that were in support of the Climate Action Plan. So both of those emails were in support and urging us to adopt that plan. We also received an email from a representative on behalf of Puget Sound Energy. It was a very detailed letter. It recognized that climate change was an existential threat. And it ended with looking forward to working with us on implementing the plan and also stressed the need to keep energy both affordable and reliable. And then on AB 8303, which is the separate track for Central Issaquah setback standards in Title 18, we received an email opposed to this and expressing concerns about making code changes for one development was the concern expressed by the person who wrote that to us. And that concludes email and comments specific to tonight's agenda items.
Thank you, Councilmember, Council President Hunt. The next item on our business this evening is committee and regional reports. And I will call each council member by name, starting with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Hall here. Just a couple of quick reports. First, for Cascade Water Alliance, at our last city council meeting, I notified you all of this evolving discussion about member concerns with the Water Supply Development Fund proposal, and I just wanted to close the loop with you. As of now, those concerns have been resolved in the Water Supply Development Fund proposals moving forward. There were some Issaquah-initiated and supported elements that were included in the proposal, including a biannual, every other year review of the water supply alternatives out there, and then also the ability for the board to update our Water Supply Development Fund vision should alternatives become more feasible. So that's the last you'll hear from us about the Water Supply Development Fund for a while. Thank you for your engagement on that issue. And then for the Growth Management Planning Council's Affordable Housing Committee, I wanted to circle back with you all briefly. So on Wednesday, November 17th, I attended the Affordable Housing Committee meeting. Councilmember Walsh was there in attendance too, in the audience listening in, so it was nice to see her. But I did want to circle back with you about a discussion that we had at the last council meeting, and that is that the committee was considering drafting a challenge letter to jurisdictions regarding the 2024 comprehensive plan update cycle and the opportunity it presents localities to scale up their response to the affordable housing crisis in the region. So the Sound Cities Association Caucus met on this before the mini-meeting, and it was our kind of deliberation that there were a number of concerns that cities would bring up with the challenge letter. It was pretty focused on one-size-fits-all approach to affordable housing in the region, and we weren't convinced that it would be effective. So I just wanted to let you all know that staff for the Affordable Housing Committee are going to go back to try to take more city engagement into that process moving forward. And you will likely see the challenge letter, will likely see the challenge letter come through to Issaquah and other King County cities in the new year. Unfortunately, I won't be able to track that as closely anymore because I'll be rolling off the Affordable Housing Committee next year. I've really enjoyed my time over the last two years working on regional affordable housing issues. But I'm hoping another Issaquah council member will be able to fill my spot. So stay tuned on all that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember De Michele.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Pulling up my screen here. First, the Connect to Community Advisory Group met on November 16th with a presentation from the San Diego Community Information Exchange about how they are incorporating equity into their virtual health information exchange platform. Second, the Healthier Here Governing Board met on December 2nd with a year-end wrap-up and progress report. Healthier Here committed over $5 million to COVID prevention and vaccination activities over the past two years, and at the same time earned a full federal bonus for excellent performance in meeting all of its goals. Attendees also received a monthly COVID-19 report with King County markers much improved, but everyone holding their breath waiting to see the impact of the Omicron variant. King County has vaccinated 89% of all eligible adults and teens, by far the highest percentage for a county in the United States. The focus right now, of course, is on vaccinating five to 11-year-olds. And then finally, the Eastside Transportation Partnership will meet this Friday, December 10th. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Walsh. On November 19th, I attended, along with City Administrator Wally Bobkowitz, the Issaquah Chamber of Commerce Board meeting. We discussed the city employment related to the vaccine mandate, recent climate businesses, our city budget, and answered other questions that the chamber members had. I also attended the Puget Sound Regional Center Regional Council's Economic Development District Board. Man, those PSRCADDB acronyms. So I attended the meeting on December 1st. There, we adopted the 2022 to 2027 Regional Economic Strategy, as well as the 2022 Economic Development Focus Areas. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I have a brief report. Eastside Fire and Rescues Board of Directors will meet this Thursday, the 9th, at 4:00 p.m. We're still meeting virtually. I don't see anything remarkable on the agenda, but we will be reviewing and adopting our 2022 legislative agenda. And then next week, I don't remember which day of the week it is. I will be hoping staff interview applicants for next year's Lodging Tax Advisory Committee members. And that concludes my last report for the council.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mertz. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board did not meet in December. However, the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee will be meeting this Wednesday from 7:00 till 9:00 p.m. online. And there's three actions or potential actions. The regional board and committee appointments will be voted upon. Everyone should have received the draft report coming from the nominating committee. If it's accepted, if the slate is accepted, councilmembers Hall's wish to have someone from Issaquah on the Affordable Housing Commission will get granted. If the slate is adopted, I'll get to move up in GMPP from alternate to voting member, which would be swell. Please take a look. If there's anything that looks out of whack, and if you want me to nominate you from the floor for a position, we can talk about that. But hopefully, people will view the nine recommendations in there for our city as a pretty good swing for a city of our size. And there'll also be an election of a 2022 pick chair and vice chair. And then there will be first touch on 2022 SCA state legislative agenda. I will take a look, and if anything on it looks crosswise to what we're trying to do, I will bring it up at a future for good of the order. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Mertz. Council President Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one report this evening. The Wyra Eight Salmon Recovery Council met on November 18th. The Wyra Eight is the technical name for our watershed. We had one decision topic, and we decided to draft, we decided to send a letter to Washington Fish and Wildlife regarding encouraging them to approve a non-native game fish policy that prioritizes protection of native salmon populations. Also is a discussion topic, but very likely an upcoming decision. We discussed adding the city of Everett to our intimate local agreement, which would be great. And then we also had a discussion on the tribal treaty rights and cultural value of salmon. And this was really interesting, and I certainly learned a lot. One of the presenters on this topic was Warren King George, a historian for the Muckleshoot Indian Tribe Preservation Department. And Warren King George collects and records oral history from tribal and community members and works with government agencies, museums, colleges, and private parties to ensure tribal treaty rights and tribal cultural resources are protected and preserved. And he presented his perspective on protecting and integrating tribal cultural legacy, traditional knowledge, and cultural resources into salmon recovery. And it was a very informative presentation and also drove home the importance of salmon from a cultural perspective that I hadn't known as much about. So I really appreciated that. And the next meeting of the Wyra Eight Salmon Recovery Council will be January 20th at 2:00, and it will be a virtual meeting. And then I have one other upcoming meeting, which will be next week, and that is for the King Conservation District Advisory Committee meeting. And that will be on December 14th at 10:00 a.m. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. The next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. And because this is our last council meeting of the year, it's a little bit long, so bear with me. To start off, there was an executive session held earlier this evening to discuss attending potential litigation for RCW 42.30.110-N1-NI. Wanted to mention some personnel policies around Juneteenth. I am proposing adding Juneteenth as a city observed holiday in 2022. This item is in the Personnel Policy Updates and the Consent Agenda this evening under AB 8209. Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States. In the 2021 legislative session, the Washington Legislature made Juneteenth a state holiday. During Juneteenth, we recognize the history of African-Americans in the U.S., and we celebrate the inclusion of all races, ethnicities, and nationalities. Juneteenth is celebrated each year on June 19th. For 2022, this will fall on a Sunday, so it will be observed as a city closure day on Monday, June 20th, 2022. Capital Finance Community Task Force last met on November 16th to discuss infrastructure priorities across Issaquah's needs in transportation, parks and trails, and facilities. The task force will continue to develop its recommendations and rule out its framework for prioritizing projects at the next meeting tomorrow, December 7th at 6:00 p.m. Last Wednesday, the city of Issaquah held a meeting with Issaquah's legislators to discuss the city's priorities for the 2022 legislative session. Transportation was a high priority for the meeting, and we specifically discussed widening State Route 18 and increasing interstate under-over crossings. Other priorities discussed included public safety, the Growth Management Act, climate change, and state marijuana revenues. To read the full text of Issaquah's legislative priorities, please visit issaquawa.gov/legislativeagenda. There are some new holiday lights on Front Street. In an effort to create a festive holiday environment and encourage small business shopping, the Issaquah Creative District expanded this year's downtown holiday lighting display to include the illumination of several business storefronts. To support businesses with the cost, the lights, and installation, the Creative District Advisory Board recruited sponsorships from Puget Sound Energy and Virginia Mason Franciscan Health. We want to thank these generous sponsors, and we hope that you all will enjoy the beauty of the lights in Issaquah this year. Last month, I had the pleasure of observing a community court session, an Issaquah community court session. Community court is a non-traditional therapeutic approach that works to provide practical, targeted solutions rather than traditional punishment in cases involving low-level offenses. Issaquah is leading the region with this innovative approach to reduce recidivism and provide restorative services to low-level offenders. I encourage all of my colleagues to visit these sessions online on Thursday afternoons. For those interested, please contact my office so that we can help you schedule a viewing. Issaquah is further expanding community court services because Issaquah has been awarded the Washington Courts Therapeutic Courts Grant. This item is in the consent agenda tonight under AB 8289. And as you heard earlier, tonight, the proposed action before council is to adopt Issaquah's Climate Action Plan. I'm pleased that the council is considering approving the Climate Action Plan tonight. This plan is critical, and I want to thank especially Megan Curtis Murphy for her instrumental work to create this strategic plan for our city's future. Megan is no longer with the city of Issaquah, but she stayed on as a consultant to complete the plan. Megan began at the city in 2014, and we wish her well in her new role as Sustainability Manager for Northeastern University. I'd also like to introduce Issaquah's newest Sustainability Manager. Please join me tonight in welcoming Stacy Van McKinstry, Issaquah's new Sustainability Manager. Stacy grew up on the east side and currently lives in Issaquah since 2012. Stacy has worked for state agencies on Puget Sound, salmon, and stream flow restoration. And we're excited to have her join the team. A little shout out here to City Administrator Bob Kowetz. Do we have Stacy with us tonight?
We do, Madam Mayor, and she can put on her camera, and perhaps she could say a word or two.
That would be great.
Great, thank you. Not sure if you're able to see me or hear me.
You're a little bit blurry, but we can hear you perfectly.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'm really excited to start this position. Today was my first day. So starting off big here with the hopeful adoption of the Climate Action Plan. I'm just really grateful for all the work that Megan's done. I told her I feel like I have very big shoes to fill just for the amazing work she's been doing at the city over the last few years. But really excited to be starting this position and working with all of you as we move forward on implementation.
Welcome, Stacy. We're so glad to have you on the team. I also want to introduce tonight another new person to Issaquah, Issaquah's new Chief Financial Officer. Please join me in welcoming Robert Hamood, Issaquah's new Chief Financial Officer. Robert has worked in the public sector for over 17 years and most recently as the Finance Director for the city of Snoqualmie. We're excited to have him. Welcome, Robert. And again, do we have, oh, we do have Stacy. Robert, hi, Robert. Do you want to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pauli. I appreciate it. I look forward to working with all of you. I look forward to hopefully more positive times coming out of the events of 2020 and '21. And came from next door, did come from Snoqualmie, so it came down 990 a little bit. But really excited about the opportunity. This is a great community. Very innovative ideas like the Climate Action Plan and just a lot of smart ideas in the city, very good people. And I'm really looking forward to this position. I have a great team with me in the finance department. And look forward to many years with you. Thank you.
Welcome, Robert. Really glad to have you on the team. Hang on, I have two more items, and then I'm finally done. I wanted to talk about a few upcoming events. Swedish in the Issaquah Highlands is holding a job fair on December 9th from 10:00 a.m. to 30:00 p.m. And they're hiring for multiple positions. You can learn more on Swedish's website. And as I learned today, you can also look at the amazing trees that they that they have decorated in their lobby for a employee contest that will just light up your heart when you see it. It's quite fantastic. On Thursday, December 9th, the Issaquah Depot Museum will host caroling at the depot from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Hot chocolate and candy canes will be provided. Masks are required, and admittance will be restricted, but an outdoor option is available. The Holiday Shop at the Historic Shell Station is open now through December 31st from 12:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the Issaquah Reindeer Festival is happening now through December 30th at Cougar Mountain Zoo. Attendance is limited, and pre-purchased admission is required for entry. Don't forget to visit Cougar Mountain Zoo's website for more information. Finally, City Hall closures. The city offices will be closed for the holidays on December 23rd, 24th, and 34th, 31st, 34th. And this concludes the final mayor's report for 2021. The next item on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar, and it was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved in one motion. And I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember De Michelle, who would like to make a statement before we go through our approval process. Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Sorry, there we go. I would like to state for the record that I was employed with an entity that is included in the city's payables, Influence the Choice. I filled the role of Temporary Executive Director of Influence the Choice. The city serves as a fiscal agent for this agency in the disbursement of a federal grant. Grant funds are being dispersed under this month's accounts payable. I have asked for advice from the city attorney as to whether this warrants a conflict of interest and have been informed that I am not legally required to be excused from voting as the city is carrying on a decision that was previously made by the council. However, for the sake of transparency, I would like to declare this employment and have my statement entered in the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? And I will look for an indication in the chat if you would like to do that. I'm not seeing any comments. Would somebody care to make a motion? Council President Hunt.
Thank you. I move to approve the consent calendar as it appears on this evening's agenda.
Councilmember Walsh.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to call the roll call vote.
Starting with Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
That's six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. The next item, our first item under regular business is AB 8256, Issaquah's Climate Action Plan. And the request before council this evening is to approve the resolution. This item was last before council at the September 28th, 2021 council study session. Oh, that's so funny. Is Megan really doing the presentation tonight? Just checking in. Okay, there she is. Wow, Megan, so many, your ears must have been burning today. There was a lot of talk about all the good work you have done. So Megan Curtis Murphy, our current consultant, is here to present the item. Welcome back.
Thank you. Go ahead and share my screen here. Right. Well, good evening, city council members. I'm Megan Curtis Murphy, and I'm here to present the final Climate Action Plan. It's been a great experience working with the community to develop the plan, and I'm excited for all the work the city will do to implement it and reduce our community's emissions. As you know, we've received a lot of input on the plan to date, and the purpose of the meeting tonight is to present the final plan for adoption so we can begin implementation right away in 2022. We started this process back in the spring with a baseline analysis of where we were with existing plans, identifying other regional efforts, and conducting our GHG inventory. We use this information to develop the framework of the plan, including the overall emissions reduction targets we want to reach and the strategies that we'll use to get there. From there, we incorporated this framework into the final plan that we're discussing tonight. Throughout the entire process, we've been engaging both city staff and community members through meetings and workshops, a survey that had nearly 300 responses, targeted focus groups, and other engagement efforts. The goal of these engagements was to ensure that we developed a plan that fits Issaquah specifically and that aligns with our community's priorities. This is a visual of the engagement efforts for the Climate Action Plan. As you can see, it was a pretty busy summer as well as a pretty active fall. We visited numerous boards and commissions and hosted two community convenings on climate. A community engagement summary was included in the materials for the plan that captures the input received at each of these meetings. The plan itself outlines some of the high-level input and shows how it was integrated throughout the plan. I'll review some of the updates we made based on this input in a moment. The Environmental Board served as the main advisory group on the plan, providing input at each stage of the process. They reviewed the goals, targets, and strategies. They suggested specific actions, and they helped inform the details of the implementation plan. The board reviewed the final plan at their November meeting and recommended it for adoption with four recommendations for changes. The first was to have the plan reviewed in 2024 and then every five years after. The ICAP was designed to be a five-year plan. However, there'll be opportunities annually for the board to review and provide input on the implementation plan as it will be a living document. However, the board thought it would be important for city council to have a formal review of the plan before the five years is up. So with this, we added a mid-year plan review for city council by June 30th, 2024 in response to this recommendation. The board was also interested in having a website dedicated to the Climate Action Plan on the city's website. It would help the public access information on the plan and how they can get involved, as well as provide recommended resources and status updates on the plan's progress. So we've added this as a year-one action in the ICAP as well. Similar requests from city council in September. There was a specific request to strengthen the wording on an action about the city's energy efficiency codes, and we've made that change to the plan. And last, there was a request to add a specific partner to a couple of the actions, so we've also made that update. These next two slides provide an overview of the biggest updates to the ICAP since the last city council meeting in September. The changes are based on input from the meeting as well as feedback from the environmental board and the community convening that we had in October. So the first is a new ICAP vision page, as well as new graphics and restructuring of the plan, which enhance the connections and improve the overall readability. Along these lines, we added an executive summary at the request of the community, which will allow people at all levels to engage in the plan and a message from the mayor as a welcoming introduction. We also heard a desire from the community to understand how they can help. So we added resident-driven actions in each focus area and highlighted the actions where community members can get involved in the implementation. We made some simple yet meaningful word changes, such as changing the first focus area from crosscutting to overarching. We updated action language, including one on supporting climate and sustainability education in schools and strengthening the wording on another. And last, we updated the resiliency target to better define its purpose. The other major update to the plan was the addition of the Implementation Plan. This section provides a detailed roadmap that will help city staff, the environmental board, and city council ensure the plan is successfully implemented. It includes sections on oversight and a robust monitoring and evaluation plan. And then at the last city council meeting, there was some discussion about the use of incentives. So in response, we added a new section on incentives which outlines the key considerations that we'll use for including incentives in action. So this includes promoting partner incentives first and factoring in equity to ensure that incentives are targeted to reach those who need them most. And last, the appendix includes an action-specific matrix with implementation considerations, including timing of the action, cost considerations, key partners, and mitigation of unintended consequences. So it illustrates some of the new components of the plan. Here's a general overview of its structure and how the pieces all work together. So first, we have the executive summary that includes the ICAP vision. We have some background on the plan and information specific to Issaquah's climate impacts and GHG emissions. Then it shows how the various components of the plan work together to reach our overarching emissions reduction target. And then the last section is the Implementation Plan, which we just discussed. Here's just a quick slide of the overall new vision document or graphic that was embedded within the executive summary. It pulls the targets directly from the plan, and it's meant to visually depict where we're headed and the type of community that we want to live in. It's also a good example of some of the graphic enhancements made to the plan since the last meeting. With that, I'd like to review the options before council this evening. The first is to adopt the Climate Action Plan as presented. The second is not adopt the plan. And then the last is to adopt the plan with changes. The recommendation from the administration is to approve the resolution and adopt the Issaquah Climate Action Plan. As we know, Stacy is now on board and well-equipped to start implementing the plan following adoption. She'll be busy meeting both staff in the city as well as the partners that will help in implementing several of these actions. And here are just a few of the sample actions that we'll be able to begin work on in 2022, including the Community Climate Challenge, an electric heat pump campaign, developing the Climate Action webpage, and starting on the city operations GHG inventory, as well as staying involved in the Title 18 updates. And it sounds like a lot, and it is, but we do have budget allocated for several of these actions. And we also have a lot of partners in neighboring jurisdictions that are already working on some and are ready to partner with Issaquah as we start to implement. So again, the recommendation this evening is to adopt the plan so we can move into action. And I'd also just like to say thank you to the city council. It's been great working with you all on the development of this plan and really appreciate all the support you've provided to it. And that concludes my presentation this evening.
Thank you, Megan. I know we're probably keeping you up late. It's been 11:40. Okay, I made a look at the chat for questions and comments, and it looks like Council President Hunt would like to start us off.
Thank you, and thank you, Megan. So I had a question regarding, one of the things that was raised in public comments, and it also came to us as a question via email with the petition from 60 people. And that is regarding the target for existing buildings. And so I wanted to know if you could give us some information about if that was a deliberate omission or not, or what the context of that ask is. And then also, if council were to consider adding a target in that area, what would be reasonable? Thanks.
Sure, thank you. This is Megan. I don't think it was a deliberate omission. I think what we have in the plan is we have an overall target to reduce energy use in both new and existing buildings. So overall, energy use is both electricity and natural gas. So we have that current target. But I think the one that the public comment was referring to was looking to make sure that all energy use in existing buildings could be renewable. So with that, as we know, we have the Clean Electricity Act in Washington State, so our electricity grid will be clean by 2030. So we're working to reduce overall energy use, but still, natural gas will still be fossil fuel energy past 2030. So I think that ask was looking at, is there a way to specifically measure that use in existing buildings? So I looked at a couple other plans, and King County does have a target related to this. So they have one to reduce natural gas and other fossil fuel use in existing buildings by at least 20% by 2030 and 80% by 2050, which is compared to 2017 levels, which is the same baseline as our other pieces. This target comes from the King County Joint Climate Commitments, which Issaquah signed on to, and a few of the other targets that we have are also aligned with that. So I think if council is interested in adding a target, that might be a good one to reference.
Looking at the chat to see if there's any more questions. If not, would somebody care to make a motion? Let's go to Council President Hunt.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2021-18, adopting the Issaquah Climate Action Plan.
And Councilmember De Michelle?
I second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any additional council discussion? And if so, please indicate in the chat. Actually, I'll go to Council President Hunt. You moved the motion. Would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I wanted to appreciate all of the evident hard work that went into this plan. It's very thoughtful, very detailed, and also, I think, very actionable. That's been one of the things that I've brought up repeatedly is that it's very important for me that this plan be feasible, actionable, implementable. So when we start actually getting to, you know, how do we achieve these targets and goals? How do we do it? So I appreciate that a lot. And I think that the community, business community, energy community, as well as groups like the People for Climate Action and the community at large has all been brought into the process. And that's also very evident from the way that this was presented in our packet this evening. I really appreciated that there was the specific way that feedback had been addressed in the current plan that we're looking at. There was a table where, you know, you had received this feedback, and you had taken it into account and made the following changes. So I think that was really excellent and sets us up for potential success when we come back to implement this plan and to understand why actions are in the sequence that they are and how to go about achieving these targets. I am also, you know, I think we're at a really important, we have an important position to both turn around, make some meaningful change, but, you know, we also recognize that we're behind. And this is really important to both the community and also important just in general that we address climate change and take action on this. I think we've seen increasingly that it impacts people's lives directly at this point, including with the recent heat dome or heat waves. And we are also at the border of forests, and wildfire risk is certainly exacerbated by climate change as well. So there's huge potential here, but I recognize also that there's huge pressure to make positive change in this area. So I think this plan sets us up for that, and then we have to go and implement it. I would ask that the community hold us accountable in that. And we will also, I think, have a lot of work to do with other levels of government because this is not something that one city can do alone. We need to work with our representatives at the state level, county level, and make sure that we have our voice heard and that we can work with them on solutions at other levels of government as well. It's going to take a lot of actions at a lot of levels. So I'm in strong support. I am interested in making this one addition for a target because it feels like if we don't have a metric in that area and a target, it would be useful to have. Existing buildings are an important part of our current inventory of emissions. And so I would be interested in moving that. But I wanted to start off by just saying that this is a really good start. I'm really interested in the years ahead when we put this into action.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Councilmember De Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. First of all, this is a really beautiful and First of all, this is a really beautiful and really impressive plan, and everybody who worked on it should feel very, very proud of the product that has emerged from a very long but very thorough process. I know we've heard from some people who would like us to delay because there might be unintended consequences. I think that the plan puts in place a monitoring system that, as it's described in the plan, it's very robust. And in addition, we will have staff, I'm sure, on a daily basis, watching for those unintended consequences. So I think that we will be able to identify and correct any unintended consequences. But my worry is not so much with adverse impacts. Instead, I worry that we have delayed taking action for too long. Approving the Issaquah Climate Action Plan tonight is a giant step, but it will be meaningless if we don't transform our words into action. Just today, I visited my doctor over at the Issaquah Medical Center. And while I was driving into the medical center, I happened to notice that there were two cherry trees along the driveway that are in full bloom on December the 6th. Trees that we usually would expect to bloom in March or April are in full bloom today. So we can see all around us that climate change is here, and we've already seen the impacts with hundred-year floods and the summer heat dome and the perpetual threat of wildfires destroying this beautiful city. So for the sake of the planet and future generations, we have to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, protect our forests, and learn how to live in concert with nature. So again, I want to give thanks to all the people who came forward. Hundreds of people were involved in putting this plan together and giving us really, really good, solid input. And of course, many, many thanks to Megan for your leadership. Just superb. This will make an impact in Issaquah for decades to come. I, too, will proudly vote. This is, again, I said when we adopted the Equity Board that that was probably one of the most significant votes that we would take. This is certainly right up there in terms of significance, and I will proudly vote to adopt the Issaquah Climate Action Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michele. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Walsh. First, I'd like to join my colleagues in thanking the community for first pushing forward this issue, the Environmental Board for so very much hard work that's evidenced in this plan, and Megan Curtis Murphy for just such diligent focus on this issue over the years. That being said, I have to say that I kind of hate plans. I mean, hate may be too strong of a word, but as a policymaker, I dislike the act of creating and approving a plan, because it often comes across as a win or a finish line. But plans are just the start. And so I would really ask that we not congratulate ourselves too much for reading this particular starting line. We really need to use that energy toward the actual actions that will make a difference. So toward that idea, here's what I will be looking for as we implement this plan. So first, additions to the CIP. Some of the examples from the plan included fleet electrification, solar, and other renewable electricity for municipal buildings, the Title 18 land use and zoning changes around parking, missing middle housing, low-impact development, and more. Upcoming action on overhauling our building codes. Budget updates, many budget updates for outreach, incentives, and policy items that are listed in the short-term timeline. Our Waste Management Contract addressing the items listed in the ICAP. And then every year, the annual Environmental Board report on the actions taken each year. I want to know what's worked and what hasn't. And I expect the Environmental Board and the community to hold us accountable to actually taking the actions to implement this plan so that we don't continue standing on a starting line where we're already behind. So yes, I support, you know, voting for this plan, but I'm not going to count it as a success unless we take the steps forward on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Councilmember Hall here. I have a few comments that I wanted to say about the Issaquah Climate Action Plan, some of which are duplicative, so apologies in advance. But first and foremost, I want to thank staff for doing such a great job incorporating our earlier feedback, the feedback of the Environmental Board and Planning Policy Commission, and the feedback of the community during our community convenings on climate. And I want to join others in thanking Megan Curtis Murphy in particular for her commitment to the issues of environmental sustainability, climate change, and also her commitment to the participation in the vision of the Issaquah community along the ways. Thank you very much. Some things I like about this plan, you know, this plan is our response to the challenge of climate change here in Issaquah. It's focused on vision, multi-benefit actions, equity, and education. It's a living document ready to be regularly reviewed by the council, by the Environmental Board into the future. I like that it's interactive, and it's very accessible to the community. And like we've heard earlier, too, it's an act of leadership in the greater region. I'm very happy with where the plan's at, and I'll be voting in favor of its adoption tonight. I'd also be supportive if there's a motion amending the plan to add an additional metric around renewable energy usage in existing buildings, if it's aligned with the King County City's Climate Action Plan, or King County City's Climate Partnership.
Collaboration.
Yes, collaboration. Thank you. And you know what? I love where Councilmember Walsh's head's at, that we need to be thinking about the future, too, but I would like us all to take a moment to celebrate. I'll take a note out of Councilmember Mart's books and quote a leader. I think it was Benjamin Franklin who said, "By failing to prepare, you're preparing to fail." So I think maybe we're 1% of the way there. Maybe let's celebrate this 1% and then look forward to the 99 that come afterwards. Those are my comments, and I'll be voting in favor. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I am not seeing any comments. Megan, I wonder if you could clarify. You had made some comments earlier about the metric and whether or not our plan was in compliance with KC4. So could you maybe expand on that a little bit? Are we in compliance with KC4? And is this metric above and beyond KC4? And is it something that we would be able to add tonight or something that we would need to research?
This is Megan. This is the target that I mentioned about natural gas is in the 2019 Joint Climate Commitments that we signed on to early 2020. A few of the other targets also come from that as well, so I think it would be in line with those in adopting it.
Make sure I'm still clear. So you believe we have matched KC4, or you believe that we need to have a proposed amendment to add a metric that matches KC4?
We do not have this exact target that K4C has. We do not have that in our plan. We have similar ones, but we don't have this specific one. We do have other ones on existing building energy usage, but not specifically on natural gas reduction.
Okay, and so you and staff are in favor of adding this one?
Yes.
Thanks. Council President Hunt would like to make a motion.
Thank you. I move to amend the plan to add the following targets, which is reduce natural gas and other fossil fuel use in existing buildings by at least 20% by 2030 and 80% by 2050 compared to a 2017 baseline. And I will put that in the chat.
Is there a second? Councilmember Hall?
No, thank you. It's Councilmember Hall. I'll second that motion.
So it has been moved and seconded to reduce natural gas and other fossil fuel use in existing buildings by at least 20% by 2030 and 80% by 2050 compared to a 27 baseline. Comments and questions? And actually, I'm first going to ask Megan a question. This is private buildings.
Yes, well, this would be looking at our full community-wide. So it would be not necessarily separating out public and private. It would just be the full community-wide.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I would like to ask Megan, is this the motion, is this something that was vetted as part of the plan? Was this out in the community when the plan was being commented on, this specific?
We did not talk about this specific target now. So we talked a lot about wanting to include existing buildings, so we included them in a different target, but it's a little bit different from this one. So I think this one is coming because we are looking at our fuel use. We have both electricity and natural gas. Electricity will be clean. Natural gas does not have that adopted law to be clean. So this is kind of hammering in a little bit more on the details from what we've been hearing from the community in wanting to reduce our emissions and working towards electrification. We also have a few actions that speak to this target. So we do have a strategy that's looking at electrification and then actions to have a heat pump campaign, which would be targeting existing buildings. So we do have actions speaking to that, that were definitely well-supported by the community. We just didn't have this specific target in there.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, it's Councilmember Hall. Question from Megan. So can you clarify again? So this is a part of what we signed as a member city of the K4C. Is this also part of the state's recent response to climate change with the state electrification plan? Or are they monitoring this metric at all? Do you know?
This is Megan. I'm not sure exactly if the state has this as a metric or not. King County does have it in their Climate Action Plan. I was quickly looking over a few of our other neighboring jurisdiction plans this evening as well. I believe Redmond has a similar one, but I'm not sure if the state has it specifically in adopted language.
Any other questions on the amendment? I was going to just ask a process question.
Mayor, this is Tisha. Your audio cut out a little bit at your last comment.
Okay, thank you. I have just got a process question and want to know if City Administrator Bob Kowits is available to maybe provide an opinion.
Yes, ma'am. What would you like?
Just want to make sure that with all of the good work that Megan and the staff did in community outreach, that doing a revision at the last minute like this, adding a metric, really is, I don't want to say appropriate or inappropriate, but there have been many touches on this before. And so just want to make sure that this makes sense.
I think it does make sense. I think, you know, the plan is much broader. I think the metrics are really to make us accountable. And so one additional metric just makes us that much more accountable. It's something that we've already signed on to for K4C, as already been described. As many of the members of the council tonight have said, this is just a beginning. And so as we move forward with this, quite honestly, the more metrics that we have to make us accountable, the better. So I don't think there's any problem.
That's a great answer. Thank you. Are there any other members? I'm just going to check the chat again. I had Councilmember Hall covered. Okay, if there's no more comments or questions, I'm going to get the city clerk to vote on the amendment. Call the real call vote on the amendment?
Yes, starting with Councilmember De Michele.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Nay.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That's five ayes, one nay.
Thank you. That passes five to one. Is there any more comments or questions or amendments proposed? And I'll keep my eye on the chat for a second. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. I, too, want to thank Megan for all the work. Obviously, there's been a lot of work and all the community members who have participated. The only reason I didn't support the amendment is probably what the mayor alluded to, and that is, it makes me a little bit concerned to vote on something substantive at the last amendment. It's something that we could amend the plan later if we wanted to. But that doesn't distract from my support of the plan, and I am excited to vote yes. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Any more comments? Any more questions? Keep my eye on the chat. Okay. If there are no more comments or questions, the motion before council that has been moved and seconded is to adopt Resolution Number 2021-18, adopting the Issaquah Climate Action Plan. And City Clerk, can you take call and roll?
Yes, starting with Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
That's six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. So again, I just wanted to recognize Megan Curtis Murphy. Megan, thank you for stewarding the Climate Action Plan and for all your excellent work on green building and environment and climate policy. We wish you all the best in your new role. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
The next item of business this evening is AB 8292, Frontline Worker Incentive Pay Ordinance. This is for non-representative staff and memorandums of understanding for AFSME, IPOA, IPSSA, Teamsters 117, Police Sergeants and Teamsters 117, and Police Commanders and Teamsters 763. The action before the council this evening is to adopt the ordinance and ratify. I'd like to invite Human Resources Director Stephanie Johnson to present this item. Stephanie?
And actually, Madam Mayor, you're going to get me tonight. Stephanie's available for questions, but I'm going to go ahead and take the lead. Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is quite something. We had put this together over the last few months, and I see Stephanie's on camera now. I want to thank her for her diligence with this. We want to recognize our employees for their excellent work during the pandemic. There are very strict laws in the state of Washington over gifts of public funds. And so what we needed to do is to come up with a program that made sense, that would be lawful, but also make sure that we recognize our employees. So what you have before you is that in order to operationalize it, there are MOUs with our representative employees, and then the ordinance before you also enacts the ability for us to do this for our non-representative employees. You know, simply stated, what we're offering is payments up to $2,000 for employees who have provided in-person services during the pandemic and will continue to perform in-person services through February 28, 2022. For those employees that could do their jobs not in person, there is a separate increment available for that. The program in your packet goes through the particulars, and I won't read through every single one of them, but this will be money that will be paid into next year. We have also some adjustments to two of the MOUs for additional items. One is for the Issaquah Police Officers Association to increase callback from one and a half times of the employee's hourly rate to two and a half times the employee's hourly rate of pay through April 30, 2022. We are concerned, continue to be concerned with staffing levels. This incentive, which is used by other jurisdictions, hopefully will keep us from forcing anyone to come to work, especially with holidays, with vacations. We wanted to make sure that that was the case. And then with the Teamsters 763, we are increasing the standby pay from $3 an hour to $6 an hour through April 30. Again, similarly concerned about the holiday period, also with upcoming inclement weather. We want people to be willing to be available for us. We have had some staffing reductions in our Public Works Operations staff, largely because of the COVID-19 vaccine mandate. And so as we work through the first quarter to restaff some of those positions, we think that will make sense. We are also increasing what is known as disaster pay in the MOU from $3.50 an hour to $7 an hour. And so certainly, if we were to get a heavy snowfall... And so certainly, if we were to get a heavy snowfall, that pay is already in existence through the MOU. This will be increasing the pay. Again, we want to make sure to incentivize people coming to work when we need them, especially when we are shorthanded going into the first quarter. So we will be very diligent in moving forward with restaffing the positions that have been vacated because of the vaccine mandate. But we hope and believe that these changes will help with that. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, really happy to answer any additional questions you may have. This is frontline worker pay plan. We think it's the broadest available in the state of Washington. There have been other jurisdictions that have done it, perhaps for one or two bargaining units. But we are reaching out really to a large number of our employees who really stepped up during the pandemic, graded it based on those that, you know, came in every day, had no choice to get their work done, and then also those who came in but also had the opportunity to work. So again, Stephanie's here, and I want to thank her for all her excellent work on this. We're both able to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, City Administrator. The motion has been put into the chat. I am keeping my eye on it to see if there's any questions or comments, and if not, if somebody would care to make a motion. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I would make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2966 regarding frontline worker incentive pay for non-representative employees and ratify and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the Memorandums of Understanding with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, the Issaquah Police Officers Association, the Issaquah Police Support Staff Association, Teamsters 117 representing police commanders, Teamsters 117 representing police sergeants, and Teamsters 763.
Councilmember Walsh?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Goodman, would you like to speak to this first?
Well, I just, I think it's a fine move to show appreciation for all of the work during certainly one of the, maybe two most uncertain times in my lifetime, and to all the folks who did what they needed to do.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Walsh, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I not only support this concept as far as, you know, really rewarding and showing appreciation for all of our frontline workers that did come in and continue to come in. But I also want to just take a moment to thank the administration and the HR team and Stephanie Johnson just for the hard work in navigating all of these issues that nobody anticipated would be coming our way. And to have done so in such a great way. I know it has not been easy, and I just also want to add in a little bit of thank you there on that as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. It has not been easy. I am not seeing any other folks indicating in the chat that they would like to comment. I can read the motion again. It is to adopt Ordinance Number 2966 regarding frontline worker incentive pay for non-representative employees and ratify and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the Memorandums of Understanding with the American Federation of State, County, and Issaquah Police, the Issaquah Police Officers Association, the Issaquah Police Support Staff Association, Teamsters 117 representing police commanders, and Teamsters 117 representing police sergeants, and Teamsters 763. Go to the clerk for a real call vote.
Starting with Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
That's six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. I just want to do a check-in with council. I know we have captured your attention since 6:00 PM this evening, and you did have one short break. Would you like a five-minute break at this point before we get on to the last item? Or would you like to just keep moving forward? Thumbs up or down it for me. It's fine. Down, down. Looks like we're going through. Okay. The next item on the agenda this evening and the last under regular business is AB 8303. It's Separate Track for Central Issaquah Step Back Standards in Title 18, and the request before council tonight is to approve it. And I'd like to invite Management Analyst Jean Paul to present this item. Jean?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, members of the council. I'm Jean Paul, the Management Analyst in the Executive Office, and tonight we're presenting on the Separate Track for Step Back Standards in Title 18. The purpose of this evening's presentation is to seek the city council's approval to place the step back standards found in the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards on a separate track from the Title 18 Land Use Code Update Project. Although I will provide some descriptions of the current code and what the administration envisions as a possible amendment, we are not asking for approval of any code changes this evening. We are simply asking you to consider placing this item on a separate and more advanced track than the rest of Title 18. As background, the Transit Oriented Development, or TOD, project would be the first mixed-use project developed since the adoption of the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards, or CIDS. The TOD project concept was also developed prior to the CIDS, so the project development team has identified a number of challenges with the project concept and those standards. The administration has evaluated all of the developer requests and is only proposing to consider one code change, since that change may better fit the intent of the code. The change the administration is proposing to consider relates to the step back standards. Step back is an architectural design element that is typically applied to the upper story of a development. Step back requires that any portion of a building above a certain height is pushed in towards the center of the property. Although there will be a picture on the next slide, you can think of step back as similar to the tears on a wedding cake. There are two current standards that apply to the TOD project. The first requires that northwest contemporary-style buildings have taller than five floors step back above the fifth floor. The second standard for the natural context zone requires a step back of 10 to 20 feet for all floors above the fourth floor that face the natural area. This slide contains the visualization for the TOD project concept. The developers currently envision a concept with a step back beginning after 25 feet with the first three floors. A five-foot step back is depicted on the right-hand side of the drawing. To help understand the TOD project concept and how step back affects it, modern mixed-use developments above four stories will commonly have a concrete podium for the first one or two stories, and then wooden construction above. In the TOD concept, that concrete podium is the first three floors before transitioning with a step back to wooden frame construction for the rest of the building. The most cost-effective construction would be to stack the residential units and maintain uniform walls throughout the upper building. Accommodating another step back at a different level than the third would decrease the size and the number of both affordable and market-rate residential units and increase construction costs. The step back at a higher floor decreases the size of the floor plate, which would also likely mean that planned family-size units would be converted to one-bedroom or studio apartments. The administration believes a step back at the third floor would better achieve the code's objective of using articulation to reduce the perceived building massing and enhance the pedestrian experience. Therefore, the administration intends to propose a code amendment similar to the city of Redmond's Overlake Village Zone standards. In Redmond, for buildings over six stories, the step back shall begin by floor seven and may begin as low as floor two. Applying this flexibility of step backs in the CIDS would allow step backs to begin at the fourth or fifth floor, but also at the third. During the process of the code revision, the administration would also explore whether the community goals of reduced perceived building mass could still be achieved by a five-foot step back instead of the current 10 feet. At the March 15 council meeting, the council adopted Resolution 2021-06, which established criteria and a procedure for considering changes to Title 18 outside of the update project. This procedure was a three-step process that included the administration providing information to the ad hoc committee based on the established criteria, the ad hoc committee making a recommendation based on those criteria, and finally, the city council ultimately approving, denying, or approving the recommendation with modifications. The administration presented this item to the Title 18 Ad Hoc Committee on November 10. To briefly summarize the criteria and the information presented, starting with urgency or time sensitivity, the current TOD project timeline expects the purchase and sale agreement, or PSA, to close in the January or February timeframe. Following the PSA, the developers will update designs before applying for permits in the June to July timeframe. Therefore, there is time sensitivity as the developers need clarity around the design standards in the first quarter of 2022. Construction financing timelines generally do not allow for a six-month or more delay in the design phase. For the second and third criteria, the work will be accomplished with existing staff, and the administration believes there will be minimal impact to planned work on the rest of the Title 18 update. For the fourth bullet on public benefits, other future projects and the community could also benefit from the code that preserves the pedestrian experience and views that the original code intended, while also providing increased flexibility to developers in Central Issaquah. In terms of what could be lost by not pulling the topic out, the TOD project would likely face increased construction costs as well as decreased size and number for both affordable and market-rate residential units. For the fifth bullet, no other trade-offs or potential conflicts with other parts of Title 18 have been identified. Based on the information provided, the ad hoc committee unanimously recommended the Separate Track for Step Back Revisions. This evening, the administration is proposing that the council approve the ad hoc's recommendation and place the step back standards on a separate track from the Title 18 update. In terms of timing and next steps, if the council approves this item for a Separate Track, it would go to PPC in January, and pending the outcome of PPC, could return for adoption later in the first quarter of next year. Finally, the administration is recommending that the council approve the placement of the step back standards found in the CIDS on a separate track from the Title 18 update. That concludes my presentation, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jean. Are there any questions on the presentation? Keep my eye on the chat. And if there are none, would somebody care to make a motion? Council President Hunt?
I move to approve the placement of the step back standards found in the Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards on a separate track from the Title 18 Land Use Code Update Project.
Thank you. And Councilmember Walsh?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the placement of the step back standards found in Central Issaquah Development and Design Standards on a separate track from the Title 18 Land Use Code Update Project. Council President Hunt, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you. Well, I, I do support this, and I just wanted to make it clear that we aren't, because there was some information presented about what the code is doing, I just wanted to make it clear that here where we are considering putting, considering making this code change separate from another larger process to overhaul Title 18, which is our land use code. And so we aren't actually, with this vote, we aren't actually considering or approving the changes that were discussed as far as the, those impacts with the step backs. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Councilmember Walsh, did you want to speak to this?
Thank you, yes. As much as I do also approve of the adjustments, I would highlight that, yes, we are just looking to answer the questions that was posed by the Title 18 ad hoc group that, you know, is there an urgent change? Is there a sense of, you know, is this going to cause problems, conflicts with other things in Title 18? And it was the view of the ad hoc committee that there weren't any problems in considering this on a separate track, so.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. So I too want to reiterate, because the agenda bill was confusing, and at one point it said, the language was about approving the change. So I think we need to be sensitive to the public and respectful to PPC that this is a procedural, sort of a procedural vote. This is not a substantive vote in terms of what that change would be, what change would be proposed. Although, as Council President Hunt said, we did get information on it tonight, which only makes sense that you would need to know kind of what we're talking about before you take a vote. One of my concerns is that this would go to PPC just from here, just kind of pop up on an agenda. And I'm not sure that technically it is wrong that something can just pop up on a PPC agenda. But I would like to make a friendly amendment, if I could, to the motion. And I would move to add that this, that the administration is directed to add this item to the, ah, what do we call it? Sorry, after all these years, I've forgotten. To the consent calendar at the first meeting in January for referral to PPC. I think that would give it, well, somebody can second if they want, and then I will tell, say why.
So the motion is to add it to the consent calendar in January to move it into PPC. And it looks like it has a second. Councilmember Martz. So Councilmember Goodman, do you want to tell us why you want to do that?
Yes, thank you. I think that gives as much transparency as we could possibly give, so that it would pop up at a meeting in January on the consent calendar. The public has an opportunity to know that this is going to be considered at a PPC meeting later in January. And then when the PPC meeting agenda comes out, it's not the first time it's, it's come out.
Thank you for that. And was, were you looking for the terms? It's not on the docket, so people wouldn't know it's coming because you do approve the docket of changes that are going to planning policy, and this one would not be on it? This is a way of giving it some visibility? Is that the point?
Yes. Do we have a docket that we're going to approve? Is the council going to approve a docket in early January that would have this on there for PPC?
Out of my wheelhouse, City Administrator, at what point in time in the year is the planning policy looking at their draft docket?
I'm going to ask for friends to help. So if any of you could get on while I begin the answer to this question. You know, the, the comm-plan docket for '22 is still a little ways away. I think the referral and the transparency that Councilmember Goodman is looking at is something a little different, just to make sure that the community is well aware of what we're doing, that there is no action being taken, that this is a procedural vote, and, you know, the action of placing it on the consent calendar on January 3 would be that. And Ms. Ollie, while I'll ask if I said that correctly or if there's anything else you'd like to add. And you're on mute, Minnie.
Still.
And you're still on mute. How about thumbs up or thumbs down? Thank you. So Madam Mayor, we have no objection. I, I, speaking with Councilmember Goodman earlier, I, I think this is a transparency question, a good government question, and we're happy, the administration would be happy to agree with the friendly amendment.
Thank you. And we do have some comments and questions. I just want to verify with Councilmember Goodman, if I look at the original motion, I would be adding at the end and to add to the consent, to a consent calendar in January for referral to the PPC for review and recommendation.
Yeah, and I see quizzical faces, and I'm going to assume that maybe I wasn't clear. Not Not, the referral to PPC would be the substantive step-back proposal, not referring to PPC whether or not we should do this on a separate track. So, so the council, with this motion, if everybody, if we got a unanimous, or, sorry, if we got a majority vote, it would approve it for a second track, and it would direct the administration to put the proposed, the topic of the proposed change on the consent calendar in January for referral to PPC later in January.
Okay, I'm still working on the words, but thank you for the clarification. We'll go and take some questions. Let's start with Council President Hunt.
Thank you, and thank you for the clarification. That did help. My question is if this affects the timing, because one of the reasons why we're considering putting this on a separate track is because of the urgency, so I wonder if this affects timing.
And, and Madam Mayor, Ms. Ollie Walsh, do you have your microphone back?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Sorry about that. So I'm not sure, you know, I fully understand what's going, what the action for council is in early part of January. When you talk about the docket, you may, you know, there's a requirement to put stuff on the docket for comprehensive plan amendments. This is a code amendment, not necessarily a comprehensive plan amendment. So, so there is no requirement to have it on the docket for it to, in general, so, so I'm, you know, it, it's not needed per se, but I don't know procedurally if council at the beginning of the year does something in terms of sending it over to, to Planning and Policy Commission.
That's a great clarification. Thank you, Director. No, I think, I think what has been proposed by the council member makes sense. So let me go back in, let's see, is it Councilmember Martz that is up next?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. You know, I think that, I'm, I seconded this and support this because I think that we continue to be in an extraordinary time when it's more challenging for our community to, to be engaged with what we're doing. We see lower engagement from the community than we did in pre-COVID times, and so taking a little bit more time to inform them of the routing of decisions that affect the public seems like a reasonable move. Thank you.
Sounds great, and I'm going to go to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. I don't think I support this because I don't see how putting something on the consent agenda where it is not read out at a meeting, it's just in a list of various budget and grant items, I don't see how that is more transparent than having a conversation on camera and having an agenda item in regular business that members of the public can track. So I, I'm not sure I'm getting the same sense that making this change would be more transparent than not.
Thank you for that. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I, I may have missed the answer to my question, and I apologize. Would, would this amendment change the timing, for example, change, like postpone that this would be going to a later meeting of the PPC if we approve this amendment, or would it be going to the same meeting of the PPC anyway?
And Madam Mayor, maybe if I can jump in and ask Ms. Ollie Walsh a question, is there been a, has there been a contemplation of when this item would be before PPC?
Yes, so we have three meetings in January with PPC and Development Commission combined meetings, all three of them, and the topic that we're discussing with them are building and design standards. So this fits in, you know, we can fit in on any three of those meetings, so it, any action that the council wants to take earlier in January should not impact that schedule.
And I think that's a more precise answer. Council President, is that correct? Do you have your answer, Council President?
Yes, I understand that it wouldn't affect the timing going to PPC.
So, looking at the amendment to the original motion, the original motion is the council providing direction to do a separate track. The amendment that has been made and seconded, it's more specific, oh, sorry, did I miss you, Barb? I'm sorry, Councilmember De Michelle?
Yes, and Councilmember Goodman also has a comment following, so. So I think I'm in agreement with Councilmember Walsh. I appreciate the intent of this motion, but I don't see that it's going to make any difference, and I agree that putting it on the consent agenda is a good way to bury it for most of the public, and we are, we're talking about it right now, and we received an email questioning this item already, so there is public awareness of what's happening. I, I personally don't see any reason why we can't just take a vote tonight and get it moving on, so that's my comment. Thank you.
I just want to provide a clarification, Councilmember De Michelle, it's not an alternate motion, you are moving it on. The amendment just provides specificity for any member of the public to know when it will be going to planning policy. So it's not changing the original motion of moving it on, it's moving it on. Next is Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Yeah, the email that we received from somebody, it's, is from Connie, and she follows everything we do, so she's going to know, but for most of the folks, they won't. Over the years, and Councilmember Martz can weigh in on this, and maybe this is a good thing that it's coming up during my last meeting, you know, we've talked a lot over the years about council touches, and how many council touches something should have before it gets voted on. So this is in keeping with what I would call our historic notion that something should have, not as many touches, that's not, that's not what I want to say, that, you know, we should strive to have touches so the public can have an opportunity to see something. It's about transparency. And so while I, while I agree that if you aren't usually in touch with a council, you're probably not going to run to the consent, the list of consent items and find something there that's meeting interesting to you, but it does more for transparency to have it on there than it doesn't. All it does is notify the public in a technical way that something new is going to PPC. That's the only goal. It wasn't to lay anything, it just keeps with our historic tradition of trying to have things have council touches. That's all it's intended to do. So it still moves it forward, it doesn't delay anything, it just has it be on the consent calendar so that in early January, the first meeting in January, so it just gets an extra council touch, that's it.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. I, I wanted to just explain why I'm not going to support it, and I, and it's partly because, one of the reasons why we have this process, which involves, which previously involved it going to the ad hoc, ad hoc made a recommendation, recommendation came to council, council discusses at a meeting like this, putting something on a different track, one of those reasons is urgency, and I would not want to, I, if it's urgent, then I think we, and I think we have fulfilled the transparency brief as far as having this conversation, and then all of the materials will be public going to PPC. So I think that adding an extra step, especially if the reason is around urgency, in this case, I don't think it affects timing, but I wouldn't, I think it could affect timing in other cases, and I think there are, there are definitely, I appreciate the sentiment about making sure the community understands what's being presented, and we do have a webpage, so I would, I would say that I think, you know, the webpage about Title eighteen, explaining more and adding to that is probably a good place for people to get information like Councilmembers Walsh and De Michelle. I, I don't know that, I think we have other options for people to let them know about what's, these sorts of things, and I think we also already covered it in this council meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you, and just, just a little point about practice. Committees and study sessions, this is the tool, oops, again? Not sure where I keep checking out. This is the tool that the council uses with committees in order to do, is that you tell the public that this is what you're sending. Still, oh my goodness.
Madam Mayor, I think you're covering your mic somehow with a piece of paper or something?
Yeah, there's, it's just the computer. Can you guys hear me now? Okay. Just want to make sure that it's clear with council, because I know many council members have only worked under the study session model, but this is the practice that we use with committees. This is the way that you provided transparency, is assignments that went down to committees came through on your council consent calendar. To not add it to the consent calendar would actually not be following your past practice, and in the fact that it's not actually creating a delay, this vote to just have it go directly would be a little different than past council practice, so. But anyway, it looks like everybody has made their comments, so we'll call for the vote. The amendment was to, a friendly amendment that the administration agreed with, was to direct the administration to add the topic of the proposed change on the consent calendar at the first meeting in January for referral to the PPC. And City Clerk, if you could call the real call, oh, sorry, Zach, did I miss you? Councilmember Hall?
If that's okay, Mayor Polly, this is Councilmember Hall. I just wanted to make a quick comment, so the other council members know where my head's at, but I guess I'm just not tracking with the people who've spoken against the amendment, why, why you're against the amendment. I guess I'm just not following why we wouldn't do this. So I wanted to give council members who are in opposition to the amendment to an opportunity to clarify if they want to, and now you know where my head's at.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I'll keep my eye on that. Council President Hunt?
Thank you. Well, I am not in strong opposition by any means, I just, I think probably this is something that we should clarify when we go to our discussion, which we've talked about before, when we talk about, you know, how we work and what we do with committees, and I think that, like I said, so I think this is kind of a, well, for me anyway, because we are in the study session and have been in for the last two years, I think this current, is current thing is a bit of a procedural gray area. I think we could discuss it, I think we should evidently discuss it when we have the bigger discussion about how we work and, you know, depending on what we do as far as committees and such, and sending things back. But one of the things that was actually an issue with the committees was that we would send things to a consent calendar, and that created a delay sometimes, and so I think that's something we should discuss, but it was, there was, that, I recall that being one of the concerns that was with regards to the study session versus committees versus study session, so. In any event, I'm not strongly opposed, I just think that it's a little bit of a procedural gray area, I think we should have a discussion about it once we know whether we're going to committees or not, but I wouldn't want to create a delay, especially when we are bringing things forward, in this case because of urgency, so.
You see, the City Clerk has turned her camera on, is that for the vote, City Clerk, or is there clarification you wanted to add?
Just for the vote, Mayor.
Oh, thank you very much. Councilmember De Michelle or Councilmember Walsh, did you have any comments for Councilmember Hall? Okay, City Clerk, could you call the roll call?
Yes, starting with Council President Hunt.
Nay.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Nay.
Councilmember De Michelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
That's three ayes, three nays, the amendment fails.
Thank you. So unless there's further comments or questions, I can read the main motion again? And, oh, Councilmember Martz, point of order?
Madam Mayor, do you have the option of exercising a tie-breaking vote in this situation?
City Clerk?
There are very few circumstances where I can vote, but the City Clerk absolutely knows every one of them.
Oh, and I, well, I might have to confirm with Jim, this doesn't involve the, the payment of, of monies, so I know you're clear on that count. Jim, can you help me out here? Is the mayor clear on, in this case?
Sure, yes, the mayor is clear to break the tie-breaking, or to cast the tie-breaking vote. The mayor can't vote on any ordinance, any resolution for the payment of money, in any grant or revocation of any franchise, it's none of those things, so the mayor should be able to vote under the circumstances.
Councilmember Martz. Funny, funny, point of order, good for you, didn't even cross my mind. I'm very much in favor of having things go through the consent calendar. I know as a person who participated in council, and prior to council, I read the consent calendar, and I know that we have advocates out in the business community who read the consent calendar. So I don't believe we're hiding things when we put it on consent, I believe it's just a way of notifying people of the timeliness of what we're doing, and so I would vote in favor of the amendment. With the amendment carrying, City Clerk, do I have a revised motion to read?
Yes, Mayor, if you don't mind, I can read it for you.
That would be great. Thank you, City Clerk.
So the motion on the floor is to approve the placement of the step-back standards found in the Central Issaquod Development and Design Standards on a separate track from the Title eighteen land use code update project, and direct the administration to add the topic of the proposed change on the consent calendar at the first meeting in January for referral to the PPC.
Thank you. So that is the new motion on the table. Just checking the chat one last time. And City Clerk, can you do a roll call vote?
Yes, starting with Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember De Michelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
That's six ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, City Clerk, that passes unanimously. The next item and the last item of business on our agenda this evening for 2021 is good of the order, and I know Council President Hunt had some comments he'd like to make.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude to council for your work over the last year. There's been a lot of thanks and gratitude expressed during this meeting, because it's the last meeting of our, of the year, but I, I wanted to take a minute just to thank council. It's been these last two years and continuing to this year has been very uncertain, unprecedented times. We've had a lot of challenges and a lot of, and our community has experienced a lot of challenges as well, and I think it's really a testament to your dedication and your hard work, which I have so appreciated, that we have been able to make progress on the strategic plan, and that we've been able to make progress even this evening on things like the climate action plan, as well as the frontline workers' pay. So I, I think we have been able to persevere and get things done this year. I wanted to thank you all for that and for your dedication and for serving the community with such thoughtful dedication as you have.
Thank you very much, Council President Hunt. Everybody sitting up here knows what these last two years have been like, and it has been astounding. I'm going to see if there's anything else for good of the order, otherwise I have some upcoming council meeting notes to make. Okay, I'll start reading. The remaining regular council meeting and both council study sessions in December are canceled, so on December fourteenth, the city council will be meeting socially to share a meal at the local restaurant, Big Fish Grill in the Highlands. This is being noticed as a special city council meeting. The city council will have its first regular meeting of 2022 on January third. There was an executive session held earlier this evening, and none other is planned, and there being... And there being no further business in 2021, this meeting is adjourned at 9:45. Happy holidays, everyone.